I call the committee on Personnel to order. On the committee, we have Counselor Demers and Counselor Toro and myself, Counselor Campbell as Chair.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Okay, so we have a few appointments here. The first one is the appointment of Charles T. Calhain to the Woburn Golf and Ski Authority. Mayor, would you like to come in up and quickly say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. So I'm proud to present to you Charlie Calhain for a position at the Golf and Ski Authority. Charlie's literally a lifelong public servant, totally committed to the city of Woburn, has been involved over the Golf and Ski Authority for years and years. He's got a good way about him, interacting with the other members on the authority, as well as a good eye for what could be done to improve operations over there. So I think he'll do a great job. His heart's definitely in it, and he's available for any questions right now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome, Charlie.
Thank you.
How are you doing tonight?
Good.
So tell us a little bit about yourself, even though we know you well, but tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on the Woburn Golf and Ski Authority.
I grew up on Walton Street, graduated from Woburn High. I worked in the service three years, back in Maryland, built a house on Cundee Avenue, which I still reach out. Retired police lieutenant from Winchester. Along the way, I got my bachelor's from Northeastern, a master's from Manor. I am a member of the Disabled American Veterans of Woburn, a longtime member of the United Veterans Council in Woburn over 40 years. I'm a member of the 35-year member of the Woburn technical, and a required member of the right to represent the public safety.
Okay, wonderful. Do you have any questions? Yes.
Charlie, whenever somebody gets appointed to the Woburn Golf and Ski Authority, I always ask them to just please, please, please keep pushing the youth programs because those are our future members for those 35 years. So I'd hope that you'd take an active role in fostering those.
Junior golf is our future. We have PTA junior golf in the spring and the fall. We have the recreation coming over with every week, junior golf. They go up the course to get acquainted to how to play golf. We have the citywide golf tournament, which a number of youth volunteer for. I donate five discipline golf balls to the kids, and it's, as most of you know, it's a super time for the kids, and they really enjoy it. As I said, junior golf is our future.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Charlie.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to suspend the rules to allow other members to speak.
Second.
All in favor? The ayes have it. Yes, Chairman Dillon.
Thank you.
President Dillon, excuse me.
Mr. Calhain's reputation in this city is well-known, hard worker, impeccable, air con cannon, you keep getting better and better picks if that's possible. Thank you for your hard work in getting these folks in front of us, and I fully support this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Chairperson. I've known Charlie for many years. I know what a fantastic job he's done in the past at the Golf and Ski Authority, and I'm happy to see what he does in the future there. And I'm happy to support Charlie for this position as well.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Charlie, thank you for your years of service, but to expand on Counselor Demers' statement, it is important that you stop bringing the youth into the programs and get them more and more involved. The high school kids break down junior high, elementary school. You know, the earlier you can stop bringing them in, because let's face it, they are, they're the future for the city of Woburn, and it's guys like you that will train them right. So I appreciate everything you've done and look forward to the future with you.
Over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of younger golfers getting involved, which I haven't seen in a long time.
Good deal, good deal.
Happy to see you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the appointment of Charles T. Calhain to the Woburn Golf and Ski Authority be sent out on to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Congratulations, Charlie.
Thank you. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks.
Next on the agenda, we have the appointment of Robert J. Klein to the Woburn Planning Board.
Madam Chair, if I could ask, please, this is remaining committee until the August meeting. I'll be back then with Mr. Klein for a presentation.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. We will keep that in committee. Next on, we have the appointment of John J. Garcia to the Board of Trustees for the Woburn Public Library. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'm proud to present Mr. Garcia for an appointment to the Board of Trustees of the Public Library. John's a lifelong Woburnite, graduated from Woburn High, been involved in all sorts of community activities, raised his family here in Woburn. I'd say he now has the time to commit fully to something like this. I know he's had a genuine interest in the library and community affairs in general. I think he's got great judgment, and I think he'd be a great asset to the Board of Trustees. So he's available for any questions right now.
Welcome, John.
Thank you.
So please tell us about yourself a little bit and let us know why you would like to be on the Board of Trustees for the Woburn Public Library.
Currently, I live over on the west side on Third Gate of the Road. Lifelong, as the mayor said, a lifelong resident. Blew off at East Woburn, over in Rockwood, Washington Street, and graduated from Woburn High, went on to college, got a bachelor's degree in engineering. I've really been excited about what's been done at the Woburn Library in recent years, and I saw a presentation a few weeks back by the director. It was fabulous. I just, I just said, "That was unbelievable, the presentation she put together." And I was really excited by it. I know they've got some initiatives that have to do with STEM. I think I might be able to help there, or at least have an opinion. And I'm still actively working, but I'm probably, you know, within 12 to 14 months of having more time on my hands, but definitely winding down.
Wonderful. Anyone on the committee? Anyone else?
I have.
Oh, yes.
John, what interests do you have in joining the, you mentioned the STEM program and being able to give, but what interests do you have?
I've got an engineering background. I've been involved in a lot of younger person engagement between college drivers, bringing people on board. We've got children down here that need help by the sounds, but I think we can move the programs along that way.
Anyone? Yes.
I have the distinct pleasure of graduating when John, 1977, and I will tell you, he was top-notch, great kid all through high school, and we see years later that he wants to get back to the community. He's a great fit for the library. The library plays such an important part in our community. He's the guy to get in there, and he'll do a great job, so I fully support this.
Anyone else? Yes.
I've had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Garcia for 50 years, maybe. I think he's a good candidate.
Yeah, we were one.
You'll do a great job, I have no doubt. You're smart, you're intelligent, and you'll do all the right things. No question.
Thanks.
Wonderful. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, yes.
I just want to say, with the engineering background, if the library could encompass, encompass something like that for other students, the kids, just give them some sort of basic CAD, anything like that, because that again is the future. It's where we're all headed. There's no more drafted boards, more clickety-click-quick, but learning that software now.
They've got 3D, they've got 3D capability over there now, so you can.
A guy like you that could probably head that up, so I look forward to seeing more of that. Good luck.
Make a motion that the appointment of John J. Garcia to the Board of Trustees for the Woburn Public Library be sent out on to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Congratulations, John. Congratulations.
Maybe you can build some something quickly for something with that 3D.
There you go.
Next on the agenda, we have the appointment of Maria Zago to the Woburn Redevelopment Board. Hello, hi, welcome, Maria.
Again, very happy to present to you Maria Zago for an appointment to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority. As you know, longtime member, our dumpy step aside, we thank you very much for everything he did at the WRA. It's an opportunity to present a new member. Maria's a local banker, has been for years, active member in the Chamber of Commerce, active member in the community. I won't say she's a lifelong Woburn resident, but I tell you, if you have a minute and you want to hear a little bit about her life story, you'd be terribly impressed, and it helps to inform her desire to give back to her community. She's very appreciative to be a member of our community, and this is a chance for her to give back. So I'm very proud to present Maria to you, and she's available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Well, welcome, Maria. So tell us a little bit about yourself and why you would like to be on the Woburn Redevelopment Board.
Sure. So I'm originally from Albania, if you can tell from my post in math. And lived in Albania for about 16 years, then moved to Greece with my family, been there for another six years plus. Came to the States about 20 years ago with my husband and my daughter at the time, she was living here in Hapold. One would say that I didn't finish high school in here, but yes, I did. This is where I got my 3D diploma, here at Woburn High. I then studied at Northeastern University for finance and accounting, got my bachelor's degree in there, as well as studied at Babson College for banking executive as well as credit analyst. Currently, I'm going through Northeastern for a leadership program and master program. I've been a banker for 17 years. I worked at Cuban City Town, Russell Street, for corners for about seven years, five years at Roth and Trust on Main Street, and I've been with Self-Bye, now as a commercial lender, for seven years. I am also part of Woburn Community Educational Foundation. We have supported teachers for, now I've been there for the past nine years. For any projects that they couldn't get funding, we were able to charm in and help. One of those programs that has helped the students is the Lex Program. That's been very successful. Part of the chamber, and it's, as the mayor mentioned, it's my time to give back to the community. So any opportunity I have, I make sure to do it.
Any questions? Yes.
Last sort of question, more of a statement. Maria, we have a very large project coming up.
Okay.
In terms of Woburn Center and looking at ways we may be able to redesign it, make it more functional and make it more attractive to businesses. So I would hope that if you do go forward with the appointment, that you'll be active and actively involved in those public meetings.
Absolutely.
To make sure that that's pushed across the finish line, and then the business community aspect of it is really at the forefront.
Absolutely.
So I think you'd be, I think you'd be a great piece on the Woburn Redevelopment Authority, a fresh face, a fresh voice, so we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, Counselor Toro.
Maria, why is it specifically that you want or that you're interested in the Woburn Redevelopment Authority?
Again, being a commercial lender and having worked with businesses for many years, this is what my niche is, as well as bringing a different perspective in the view different from based on my background, I think I would add value to the community.
Thank you.
Counselor Demers?
I think it is beneficial, Maria, that we have somebody on the Woburn Redevelopment Authority that has such a vast background of numbers. That's huge these days. Budgets are big. We're always looking at ways to make the numbers work, so having someone with your background, experience, and knowledge, know-how, expertise, that's a plus. I wish you well. Thank you.
Counselor Viola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's great with your background, how you want to give back to the city and the community, and how you also worked all throughout the city so you do know different aspects of where the banks are and the businesses. So I think that actually would help out a lot.
President Dillon.
I don't know Maria, but I'm impressed with her resume, and it's just a perfect fit, I'm sure, for some new, fresh, young ideas. The Woburn Redevelopment Authority does great work. We have, as the good counselor to my right stated, we have the downtown project getting looked at very seriously, and to have somebody that's new to the community, relatively speaking, with some new ideas, it's great fit. So I fully support this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
I'm Counselor Papalatto, I'm the liaison to Woburn Redevelopment Authority, and it feels like, I haven't met you before, but you seem like you bring good energy to the matter.
I would hope so.
And I think that that would be a great fit for that group. I think you'd do well there.
Thank you.
So I think I support your team.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll make a motion that the appointment of Maria Zago to Woburn Redevelopment Authority be sent out on to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Congratulations. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, we are adjourned.
All right, I'll have the meeting on finance to order. Counselor Viola, I'm the chair. With me on the committee is Counselor Campbell, Counselor Demers, Counselor Ferrulo, and Counselor Mercer-Bruel.
So Chair, I'll make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the three previous meeting's minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The one thing we have on the agenda is the order authorizing the mayor to file applications and execute agreements relative to one farm water treatment plan, P-Pass removal. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. What's in front of you tonight is essentially a renewal of what we had previously approved, Mayor Giallman, to do on behalf of the city, guiding the P-Pass water treatment removal addition. This allows us to participate in the state's fund for low-interest loans and grants to help fund this particular addition. So it's really a formality. A couple weeks ago, Carol Rego, our consultant, reached out to me and said that we should substitute my name for Mayor Giallman's. So that's what's in front of me.
Anybody have any questions?
Make a motion, the order sent out on to pass.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We stand adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Call the committee of public safety and licenses to order. On the committee is myself, the chairman, Counselor Papalatto, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Demers, and Counselor Toro.
Make a motion, we dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The first item on the agenda is Teresa Batoni with the application for secondhand dealer and secondhand collector's license for Teresa's Closet operating at 164 Main Street in Woburn.
May I?
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Teresa for coming this evening. I did some work with her about three possible conditions.
Oh, good.
So I'd like to present those.
Please.
So condition one, the hours of operation being 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. Condition number two, that the fire department will conduct an annual inspection of the location. And condition number three, that there shall be no refinishing of furniture or woodworking projects allowed on location. And Teresa is amenable to those three conditions, and I think that addresses some of the concerns that were brought up by the other counselors as well.
Absolutely.
So with that, I'd make a motion that we send the license petition out to pass with the three proposed conditions.
I'll second that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Take care.
Teresa, nice seeing you again.
I don't have to go through my college career.
No, no.
Eight years.
You want to.
It's too happy.
Have a good night. Happy 4th of July.
Thank you for doing that.
The third and final item on the agenda is communication from John J. Devine, Woburn Woburn Cab, requesting to appear before the licensing board about cab licenses, licensing board, Public Safety and Licensing Committee. Mr. Devine, please, you have the floor.
Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, here in the spirit of cooperation, and I'm going to give you the problem, and you guys got to figure out the answer. The Woburn cab company has to have special licenses to run a cab, and they are approved by you people with standards that we have to meet in order to do that. The cost of it is $5,250 to register a cab in the city of Woburn. There's livery people out there that have livery licenses that don't have to withstand some of the things we do, but they have their own standards that they have to meet in order to get that obligation from you, and they have to have a special livery place. Now the question is, why, if there's people out there, they call them Wobbers and Lippers, how come they don't have that special place? They're doing the same thing we're doing. We're subject to drug testing, and we're subject to a workman's comp. They're not. And the other problem you have is, there's probably five of them on each side of the fence right now. They pay $830, $850 for insurance, so of course they can do the thing cheaper than I can, and I'm not against them being out there. You've got to look at both these guys that have started this thing, they're geniuses. They own the biggest two transportation companies in the world, and they don't own a car. But the point is, why are we allowing them to have, I have to have special places, they don't have to. And their point is, somehow you have to police this thing. Now, the guy sitting down at the end who was a former chief of police knows, the police don't have time to go around policing this. They've got other things they've got to do. But somehow, you have to come up with some type of a theory of why is there a double standard in the industry, and it's here in the city of Woburn, that you have to somehow fix it. Either I don't have to pay $5,000, or they got to pay something, because those cars don't have insurance. The people that rent them, they're only covered when they're in them. An example is, in Boston on Marlborough Street and Gloucester Street, they had one of the Uber people get in an accident, caused four car damage and a fire truck. They wouldn't pay because he didn't have anybody in the car. He was going to pick somebody up, but there was nobody in the car, so they don't think that they're obligated. And nobody has seen a certificate of insurance from them. I have to produce a certificate of insurance in order to get the license from you people, and so doesn't everybody have a livery? Well, how come they don't? You have a double standard here, and that's, I'm bringing it out to you. You guys got to figure out what the answer, I don't know what the answer is.
Go first.
No, you can.
John, can you just explain what makes up the $5,250 generally, like rough numbers?
It basically, it covers everything for people in the, the only thing it doesn't cover is collision, and I would say that's only because of the industry. The industry is now at a point where they, they pool everybody together. We're included in the Boston group, okay? So we have to pay the same rate as the Boston people. That's just part of the game. And the problem you have in there is, most of the Boston police officers will not stop a Boston cab, because 50% of them don't even have licenses. And they're like, one guy said, "I go out and take a guy, I give him a ticket, 20 minutes later, he's coming down the street in another car." It is, I was, they just, it's an unwritten rule, but the amount of money is because of the liability that you have.
So probably it's insurance.
Yeah. If you turn around and take, and I'll use an example, the buses are half that price, and we have more people in them, but they're more, they're more safer than the rest of them. The liveries aren't that cheap either. I mean, they have to pay about $3,800.
So the question on this insurance, is it, is it an RMV issue? Is it a state issue, or is it a Woburn issue?
It's a Woburn issue in Australia.
So may require you to have.
You require certain benefits that we have. We have law, only because of the obligation and stuff, but you require us to put a certain amount, and we have to produce a certificate of insurance.
Okay.
To prove that.
Because I know, I know Lyft, Lyft drivers, because I was one for a year and eight months, John. I did have to prove that I had individual car owner insurance.
Yeah, but you didn't have it for coverage of the people that were in the car. Now, would you pick me up as a customer?
That's correct.
And I'm riding in the car, and you get in an accident, you don't have insurance to cover me.
Because it's, well, technically, it's required by your insurance company if you do do rideshare driving, but a majority of the drivers don't get the expanded coverage. So you're saying that the driver's covered, but the passengers aren't, because it's a, because it's a business, not a personal friend in the vehicle with them.
That's interesting.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, the only thing I, I would say to that is, I think it's more of a state level, because the state is the ones who regulate Uber and Lyft through the depart, well, it was the Department of Public Utilities, I believe now it's the Department of Public Safety. So that would, I think your argument would be there.
I understand that.
Because it would be virtually impossible for the city of Woburn to track who's driving a Lyft or Uber.
I don't disagree with you. But the problem is, it's happening here, and you're requiring me to do some things you're not requiring them to do. You're not requiring, not the state. This is what's going on in the city of Woburn. This isn't something that's going on in Winchester or Stony or someplace like that. And have some other fun with you. The cab company's been around for 82 years. It's going to be around for a few more years, as long as I'm around.
Listen, John, I own a construction company, so different industry, right? But it's, it's not completely different. You know, I have, I have insurance, costs me a lot of money a year, similar to what you're paying for your cabs and your licenses, and just like you have to compete against individuals at Lyft and Uber, I compete against contractors that are able to offer the service much cheaper because they don't have proper insurance or the licenses, but the consumer doesn't really know that, and it doesn't really matter, they could still do the job, but they're offering the service less, you know. I would probably agree with what Counselor Demers says, you know, in a situation like that, the city of town, although it offers me, for instance, Woburn, requires me to carry insurance, right? They can't stop another contractor from providing the service to a customer. That's more, the state's the one that maintains the licenses.
But you're allowing it to happen here in the city. You're allowing, you're allowing Lyft and Uber people to pick people up in the city of Woburn, and they don't have to have special places. I have to have them, why don't they have to have them?
Yeah, what I'm.
And you can't use the argument, it's a state problem, it's happening here in the city of Woburn. This isn't happening in Winchester or Stony. In other words, you've got to look at it, you can, I understand what you're saying, because we have the same thing in the bus business. When you go compete against somebody to get a contract, you know, there's all kinds of things that come into play, but this is happening here. This isn't happening in Winchester, it's not happening in Stony.
It's not?
Why is it, I'm sorry.
No, that's a question. What, what's to say it's, how do we know it?
I don't, I don't have an answer for it.
Okay.
I'm not going to come in and tell, I'm telling you, the problem is there, but I don't want you to try to use the argument, it's a state problem, because it's happening here.
I don't think, I don't think we're trying to dispo, trying to push it on the state. I just think it's, Counselor Demers is probably right, that it does happen, or something has to happen.
I have no question about it. I don't argue that.
It is happening here, like you said, but, you know, this is, exactly. So can we do something at the city level? I actually, I don't know the answer to that question, but I would say we do have to have a conversation, or there's a conversation that has to be done.
We can ask. We can ask, we know.
I could be dating myself, John, but I mean, back in the day, you had to get, in the big cities, right? You had to get a medallion, right, to, to be a taxi.
They should have.
Right? And people paid lots and lots of money for those, right? Especially in New York and I think Cambridge. So how are they, and I'm, I'm asking because I don't know, how are they handling it?
Well, the biggest problem you have with the whole thing is, for example, in Burlington, the normal cabs, you can't get a cab through because they went out of business. The problem you have is that Logan Express, Lyft and Uber have taken a lot, a lot of business away from that industry. Okay? And the only reason why my particular company is still operating is that's how I got started. And I feel obligated to the point that I want to maintain the cab company. We don't make a lot of money in the cab company. I mean, it's something to do. You're, you're talking to the people, you're out there, you know what's going on. But then down in, somewhere in Cambridge, Green Cab went out. A lot of them have gone out because of the fact that, that, that what happens is the Lyft and the Uber and Logan Express and a lot of the people that are in the Lyft business have gone to work. And they campaigned and got a lot of the, the people that are doing it. And the other thing you have is, is a lot of the older people who use the cab, the younger kids aren't using them. And most of them got their own car. And you, you go back, when we first started, I kind of laugh about it. We got thirty-five cents to go from Woburn Center to Springfield. We got a dollar and a half to go to North Woburn. And that was when there was probably twenty cabs in the city of Woburn. But there's none now because again, when, when someone like when Hawkins went out, they, they just folded. When Dorrity went out, they just folded because they didn't think the money wasn't there. And, and, and again, I, I do it because that's how I got started.
So my question to you is, and I'm not being fresh here. I'm trying to spitball, right? So, so at the end of the day, what you just described, I was thinking of things like Blockbuster. You know, back in the day when we used to do that thing, right? So, so that is no more. How, how could you transform your business into a model that's more like Uber or Lyft? There's no, you can't like say to them, let me be a franchise or, and I don't know, so.
They're going to, they're going to pay them minimum wage. Now, you're former Lyft driver, who driving, I'll tell you, he wasn't making any money. He might have thought he was, but he wasn't. He donated his car and he donated the gasoline. Now, they donate the car and the gasoline. I mean, you've got to give the guy a lot of credit. He's a genius. You've got all these people to do, and there's always people coming through the door wanting to do it. So I mean, you've got to look at it from that. But for us to, to turn around and take this industry, it's not going to happen. And the other problem you have is, if I had to make a living off the cab company, I'd be out of business. Because you can't support it because the businesses are there.
Right.
And, and the other thing you have to look at is, we're very fortunate in the city of Woburn that we have the Cummings Park and all that industry that's in there that sustains the thing. As far as all the different, and the other thing you have is the fax machines and all, and emails and all that stuff, that took a lot of business away. But that's like, just like you say, the blockbuster.
Right, I mean, businesses do transform and unfortunately sometimes, you know, you, you have to figure out a way to transform with it or pivot or whatever the right words are. I don't know.
No, you reinvent yourself. And what I, I basically was able to reinvent myself into the bus business. So I got ninety-seven buses at a time. Thank you for the time.
Oh, just, just a question, John. So what you're asking, so obviously you, you want fairness. So are you saying that you're, that you're hoping that the Lyft, people who have businesses for the Lyft and all of that, and the Ubers have to pay that extra insurance? Is that what you're?
They're going to get the liberty licenses. They are, but that's, I, I'm not being fresh here, but that's your problem. I'm just presenting the idea to you, what's going on. Whatever you see, I have no control over.
I, I don't know.
I'm not looking to make enemies. I'm looking to make friends.
I don't know if we're allowed to do that or not, or the.
The guy in the corner can tell you what they're allowed to do.
I think the only thing we'd be allowed to do is to approach our restrictions and attempt to lower the restrictions. We need to look at liability, legal liability. I just see each of you a two thousand sixteen study on Ride for Hire in Como, Massachusetts. It's a fifty-one page report. I just texted it to you because I don't have all your emails in my phone. I sat on the commission as the police chief, where they addressed all, everything that John's talking about. I'll read up on it.
Because, well, well, hang on, can I just, just finish? So I see that you're trying to make it a fair, a fairer system so that you can compete.
This is going to happen at some given point in time. I mean, it will happen.
Because if they have to pay more insurance.
Yeah, they're going to.
Then maybe they won't stay in the Uber or Lyft business.
That's where the profit model, I mean, they, they're not paying the bills unpaid.
All right, that, then you would be able to then get more business and you would, you know, stay open. What is it? Do you know exactly what you're paying? What is it you're paying for that they don't have to pay for?
Basically, the insurance. I mean, it's five thousand dollars against eight, whatever. We were, who were you paying for my young daddy?
I was just paying, damn it, conscience. It's when I drove it was before the requirement that you needed to have expanded coverage, which they do.
Okay, so you're saying that if it's fair, I'm just trying to figure it out myself. So if it's fair for everyone, they would then need to pay more?
Yeah.
Or you pay less?
And the other problem you have, which is never going to happen. He takes his car and trades it in. No, no, he takes his car and trades it in. We use for commercial. The deals are never going to succeed. They're not going, they want to resell the car, so they're not going to do it. But those cars are actually commercial vehicles used and they've got to be treated different when they're put out to the public. With no deal is going to do it. I mean, you're talking, you're talking right.
No, I mean, it's actually a very interesting question.
I mean, there is no, there is nothing in the state law that allows municipalities to regulate.
I was just going to ask.
It's all state driven. So there would have to be a procedure within the state law to allow cities and towns to regulate ride share themselves. That's the one, the one problem I'm seeing with this discussion is that we don't have the authority to regulate ride. We, we, unless the Department of Public Safety or whatever it is, Department of Public Utilities, I can't remember if it moved. I think it's DPS. Is it DPU? So it's DPU. We would have to get a database from DPU about how many people that register their address as, as in Woburn, driving for ride share. We wouldn't be able to regulate people coming from outside of the city. You can only, we can only regulate vehicles that are inside.
Yeah, yeah.
That are registered, that are registered in the city.
When they're in the city, when they're in the city.
So again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to blow you up by any stretch of the means, John. It's just, we don't have the tools and the capability to regulate ride share within the city limits. We don't. We wouldn't even be able to find who was, who was driving for ride, ride share without, without the state giving us that.
Using that as an argument. Why am I breaking? Why, why, why can't I do the same thing?
It's a valid opinion.
But anyways, we wasted enough time here.
No.
Keep the interest of everyone on the table here, right?
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I'm new to this, so this fifty-two hundred dollars you spent, who, you're paying that to the city?
No, the insurance company.
The insurance company.
So take that times five.
So I was going to ask, how many cabs?
Five. You gave me five licenses. In order to get a license from you, it would have to be registered. And I have to show you the registration. Just to show off a little bit, I got place three, four, five, seven. Taxi place three, five, seven.
Six.
And in the school bus side, I got one through thirty, just to show off for me. And on the bus, on the buses, I got two through ten. I missed one by ten minutes.
All right, that's a.
I just, I just have one more question. So then, because we always make it mandatory that any businesses, right, in Woburn, they need to register their vehicle, right?
Well, when we, yeah, yeah. So when we give out a special permit and they want to park those vehicles overnight somewhere.
Right, so I'm assuming that Lyft, the Lyft and the Ubers don't have to do any of that.
Because they're, they're not required to carry commercial insurance. It's a personal vehicle that's shared.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to open it up to the members who aren't on the committee.
Second.
All in favor?
So listening to this, and you've obviously done your homework on it. First, a statement, thank you for what you do with the senior citizens and giving them a break with the taxis. A lot of people depend on that, so thank you.
You run up.
I, I understand.
You run up. You would, we, we, not that there is a Woburn now, but you always took care of it.
So my question is, when you say this doesn't happen in Winchester, Winchester has Lyft and Uber.
But they have no cab company.
That's, okay, so.
There's no cab company in Ready. There's no cab company in Stony because they all went out.
Okay, so that's why you said this doesn't happen in Winchester, just for the general public. And my last question is, being in the real estate development, property management business, I hire a lot of subcontractors. We ask for workman's comp. If the plumber comes in and says, I don't need workman's comp because I'm a, work by myself, I'm sure you see this as well. Is that the same loophole basically that this whole concept is working on?
No, no.
Because they're independent workers?
What they're doing is they're hiding behind the state. They hide with the, 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 the share a right, particular situation.
But it's almost like a loophole with the same deal with the workman's comp. Because I'm a plumber, I'm coming in, I don't have a helper, I do my own, I don't need workman's comp. I need a certificate of insurance, but I don't need workman's comp.
Right.
Kind of the same thing? Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, John.
Okay, John, thank you.
Have a good night.
I will too.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Going to call the committee on special permits to order. Committee members, including myself, Councilor Marissa Bruin, Councilor Campbell, Councilor Viola, Councilor DeMambro and Councilor DeMers. We have two items on the agenda tonight.
Make a motion to suspend the previous meeting.
To have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First item on the agenda is Everett Street Realty. Councilor. Awesome.
Hello, Mary.
Good. I know George knows who you are, but for the record.
Yes, for the record, of course. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Attorney James Giuliano on behalf of the applicant. We had a, a public hearing, the last, the last public hearing for the council members. And we discussed proposing eight units, mixed use on Terra Walmond Street, which sort of goes from Everett and onto Walmond Street. It's one of those lots that's graded. The back of the property is on Everett Street, the top is on Walmond Street. We have about five thousand square feet, which is a very tight area next to the Elks at the back parking lot. Everybody's familiar with the site. So we propose a mixed use with commercial, that grade, and then second floor and third floor would be four apartments on each, on each level, so a total of eight. What we are doing now, and if you remember the conversation at the public hearing, we did have some conversations mostly about the parking. We are continuing at this point in time to sort of configure additional parking spaces. We think we can squeeze a couple of more spaces up front, albeit we may have to request a little bit of waiver and setback, but we're getting there. As you're aware, the ordinance does require five foot setbacks. We think we can fit a couple of spaces in the front of, of the property, kind of recess that building a little bit backwards. So we think we could squeeze a couple of spots there. We are proposing drainage, obviously would still have to be looked at by the city engineer, but we're looking to change the drainage a little bit so that our access points would be elsewhere, which may allow us additional spots in that garage. So we are working that out. Jack Sullivan right now is working all that drainage out with the Rod Bork, who is the, the architect. And then we're also expanding outside of, of, of sight into getting easement areas. That we do have a couple of neighbors. As you may know, my client does own next door, so we're trying to configure without making it an issue for his building, maybe get a couple of spots via easement next door there. So we're trying to hope at least maybe create two to four more spots that we didn't have before. We're tired, obviously, with the drainage, with the architecture, trying to make everything work out without, you know, making this thing detrimental to, to that site. So that's where we are right now, hoping to get everything. Jack Sullivan's just on vacation, he's back, hoping, obviously, to get something ready for the next public hearing. But that's, that's, that's where we are at this point. So we are trying to make everything work for the council's recommendations.
I'll defer to Councilor, whose ward this is, Councilor Papalata.
So with these new configurations and the new lots, what, what kind of parking areas do we still require?
So we're still going to need, obviously, right now, we have sixteen that are required for the residential. And we have five that are available on site at this point.
Excuse me, attorney, can I have a motion from somebody on the committee to allow?
Motion to allow people outside the committee to?
Yes. Second.
I don't need to re, re-ask.
No, no, go ahead.
I beg your, so right now, again, as we, we proposed in the application, we have sixteen residential. Obviously, the commercial is the commercial, but the residential, we were looking to propose five onsite spots that we're looking to expand. Hopefully, like I said, between two and four. I think four is a moving, a little bit much, but I think we can probably squeeze two to, two to three. So we would, sixteen are required, so that's. We're, we're buying in eleven now, so that would be probably about nine or nine to, seven to nine that we'll be buying into the reserve.
In the spot.
In the parking, correct.
And I know there were a lot of different approvals, needed bodies of different, you know, the engineering team, a different team of the racing.
Yes.
Where are we with some of those?
Yep, so until the drainage is reconfigured, obviously, you know, DPW and engineering sort of mirrored the same concerns. It was more the drainage, the roof runoff, which we're clearly addressing. That's going to be further addressed. I don't think there's any issues on our side of things. We just have to put them together now that we're, we may be reconfiguring access points. If you remember the infiltration, the access was, was under the building, which could, you know, pose a problem for parking. So again, if we move that outside to the, we have an easement area on, on Everett Street that we may utilize for the infiltration. We just want to moving it, make sure it works, which I think it will. But again, we'll, we'll resubmit that to all the departments.
Okay.
I think the other, the other concerns were, were addressed. I think plan directors was, was more about the parking, which I think I addressed at the last meeting. I think there was a, there was a misconfiguration as to how many spots we would be buying into. He had in his comments, he was, we were paying into all of the spots, but under the ordinance, special apartments for the residential. So I think that was cleared away. But yeah, I don't think there's really much concern with that. It was more of the parking and the infiltration.
The public, the public hearing, there was no neighbor speaking out against it?
There, there was none speaking again, uh, speaking not in favor, correct. We had two that were speaking in favor of it, if you remember them, but yes, they.
I did.
So I, I still believe those nine spots are going to be a sticking point. And I mean, the, the rest of this council has equal weight in there, but that was kind of the biggest then.
That was the biggest thing, and that's what we're addressing. And we're really, like I said, we're crunching things, because I know it was a concern of the council at the last public hearing, so.
And I think it would be loopy to try to get that nailed down before you go crazy with all this other stuff. Because it's a deal right now, right?
Yeah, so, 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 you know, obviously, the, the civil engineer works hand in hand with the designer, the architect. So that all has to be configured into the, the drainage. So what will happen logistically is we'll figure out, we can squeeze in spots. Civil engineer will see, you know, will those spots work? Are we, are we heating into drainage systems that we would need? Doesn't work, does it not work? And then, yeah, everything comes together. Yep.
Thank you.
Councilor Viola and Councilor DeMambro.
Thank you, Beatrice. I always look favorably for businesses or things that come into the city that clean up blighted areas. But as we know, Woburn downtown, the parking, it's atrocious at best. I still take issue with, you're saying you're still going to need seven to nine spots that you're going to purchase through the city. And I'm just not entirely hap, not happy, but not entirely comfortable selling those spots for residents to use because they're not guaranteed the spot. So we're charging a person or the business forty-five hundred dollars per spot, and it's not guaranteeing an individual to actual park there. So until we can figure out better parking solution, I don't think I could vote in favor of selling spots in the city.
Councilor DeMambro and then Councilor DeMers.
Attorney Giuliano. How did you, did you go over the, the idea of parking underneath the, the building that we had discussed before? Like on High Street, behind the old Misottas? You know, they built the building up on columns and they have back to back parking per apartment underneath. I believe there's eight or ten vehicles that park underneath that, that, that structure. Is that something by which you could put a, a garage underneath that, obviously open face, no door? And same type of thing with the columns, come in via Everett Street, go in, back out and, and, and do it that way? I'm not sure necessarily how many spots you could get, but I think it's a little bit more secure than now when you're building or crunching, you know, your, your setbacks. Has that been explored at all in depth or?
We are, yeah. I mean, it's, obviously, right now the, the parking is underneath in that garage space, but we are exploring if we leave it open, can we get more, more spots there? That's something we're, we're looking at as well. Yeah. Obviously, with, with the drainage, you know, everything's a possibility right now and we, we acknowledge that. So our, our job right now, as I said, a meeting with them last week, is to, you know, give me, give me the best case scenario as to how many spots we can get reconfiguring that building. And that's what they're doing. It's, it's hard, but, but we're trying.
Okay. I'll stay tuned, thank you.
Councilor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I re, I respect Chuck's view on, on the issue with the underlying, you know, parking ordinance in downtown, but, you know, let's do something about the ordinance. We can't, I, we can't be bringing this up every time when somebody comes here with a petition. Because it's not the petitioner's responsibility to find us an easier way of swallowing what we already have for city ordinance. The ordinance is there for downtown parking, where if you're within a certain footage of a municipal lot, you're eligible to access those parking spaces. There's a project before us to fix a near blighted area of the downtown. I have a possible project in my ward that will be coming before us that may deadify a portion of downtown that's been sitting there. Whereas, what are we going to do? Turn that away because we don't want to give up a few more parking spots? What do we say to the new applicants or the new petitioners when we've approved so many already downstairs, or downtown, rather? I think, you know, we, we've got to be real consistent in these things because everyone here has voted for additional parking for a downtown redevelopment, to be parking in the city lot. Okay? So I just cautioned my colleagues that, you know, we can't, we can't take out the faults in our ordinances on a petitioner when they've come here before us, made a good faith effort and are doing their very best to redesign a structure to allow for more parking underneath. And there's going to be parking up there that's been allowed to every other petitioner that's come before this council. I just, I just urge caution because we need to be consistent, we need to be fair. It is our ordinance, and if there are folks who do not like the ordinance, then let's change it. change it. But having this discussion all the time when we're dealing with new petitions, you know, it's got to be frustrating for petitioners to have that occur, and I'd be more than willing to work with several of you on changing that ordinance if we see fit, maybe increasing the payment. It's spelled out in the ordinance that the parking is not guaranteed. They are just allowed to use the city lots for park. I just, that's just my pet peeve when it comes to these things, that, you know, we need to do better with the ordinance if the ordinance is bothering us and not take it out on the petitioners that have come here and are trying to take advantage of our ordinance that we have on the books. That's all I have to say.
President Dillon.
Thank you. And I agree with both the councilors that it's a balance, and I understand what you're saying, and I'm going to take it a step further, because I'm guilty as charged. I stood up here and said in chambers, you know, it's impossible to get a parking spot, but I've been doing a little research on it, talking to people that have been around even longer than I. I'm not sure that we have a parking problem. I think we have more a parking management problem. So I think we all need to be challenged and look at that more, and look at other communities, and I know, God forbid, if you say pay parking, everyone loses their mind, but as an example, in order to keep things moving, I know other communities, you go and you pay, but for the first 15, 20 minutes, say, it's free. So if you want to run into Macos to get a sandwich, you're not going to be held to that standard. But if you want to go to one of the other restaurants and sit down for two hours, you may have to pay two or $3. Without saying the names, we all drive to Woburn Center, and we all see the people who park there all day and all night. Again, do we have a parking problem as far as space, or do we have a parking management problem? I think we have a parking management problem, and I think in order to get downtown thriving, I think we do need residential above the commercial and the restaurants and such. We all know you walk down Woburn Center at 10:00, 10:30, and it's dead, you know, yet at 8 o'clock, there's activity. So if you had the residents that live there, it would keep the activity going 12:00 at night. So that's my thoughts, and I'd be glad to sit with anyone in the council and really try to figure this out. There is indeed an opportunity to not only create more parking, but manage it much better than probably it's ever been done before. Thank you.
Anybody else who hasn't spoken yet? Councilor Dillon.
Respectfully to my councils, this is, I think, the theme of the night. I think we're going to start looking outside the box. The easiest solutions, I don't think they're there anymore. So we can't keep relying on 400 spots when there's 2,500 people parking in those spots, anytime, any random time of the day or night. You also have the bolognese over there. There's going to be a function hall going in there. There's a bolognese that will be re-resurrected. You've got all the eaters, restaurateurs, so on and so forth. That's why I'm saying, when a petitioner comes here, I truly feel they have to think 110% outside the box when they come here with a petition, and they have to exhaust all possible solutions on how to make it work on that possibility. And if you can't, then you're asking for something that's almost impossible to do, and even though the structure gets built, we go through all the process. You have people that'll rent these units or buy them and then sit there, pay the $4,500, and then they're left out in the cold, especially during the winter season. This is something that's ongoing. It's like peat and repeat climbing the tree, and we keep coming over the same problem. That's why I say, if we got to start lifting these buildings and parking underneath, then that's a viable solution. If properties have to be, you know, purchased, two properties, one for parking only, and the, well, then that's something that needs to be looked at. I know no one wants to look at that, but the density in that area is overwhelming. It's absolutely packed, and I'm not sure, by buying, you know, parking spaces with no stickers and to President Dillon's point, there's no one policing or managing this. You could even have people that could park there for days or weeks that are friends of a friend that needed someplace to park a vehicle. These are things we can't control. So that's why I feel, when you come, the petitioner would come, before you come, maximize everything, because it's not like this is everybody's first go-around. We all know that it's a serious issue. So when you have a petitioner come here, or you have a client that comes to you, I think it needs to be said moment one, you better have a great design that will accommodate everything you're looking for, and not try to rely on the city to solve an ongoing problem that will always exist as long as that structure is in place, that we approve. And that's why I say, exhaust all options right now in the design phase, go through that CAD system design as many times as possible, I don't care if it's 500 revisions, to make it work, so that you can accommodate what you want on that property on that park. Thank you.
Anybody else? Before I, I'm going to, okay, go ahead.
I would just like to say, I agree with Councilor DeMiro. That's all I would like to say. I think you're absolutely right on. There isn't a lot of parking there. I understand what you're saying, but there is through design, whether that is purchasing another building, whether that is maybe one of the floors, you can't have apartments there, but you're going to actually have some sort of parking on that floor, so that you can accommodate what is needed for that area. So I, you know, nicely said, I completely agree. So thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to wrap it up, if you don't mind, Attorney. I'll give you the floor as we finish up. I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I would be hard-pressed to support this permit giving away parking spots. And I, with all respect to my councilors who said, well, we have this ordinance on the books, and we voted in the past, this is a special permit, and the reason why it's special is because every time it happens, it's special, and the circumstances may have changed. Otherwise, it would just be a free-for-all. You wouldn't have to come here. And I have been for this in the past, but I've always expressed my concern about it. One of the biggest problems is the fact that people aren't actually getting a parking spot. The average cost to build a parking spot is around $55,000. What are we charging?
Forty-five.
Forty-five hundred. So maybe we have to do a couple of things. Maybe we have to revisit our ordinance and charge what it would really cost for a parking space and give the parking space and manage the parking lot better. But we have to work with what we have right now, so I wanted to be honest with you, Attorney. I can't support giving out another parking spot in that municipal lot, especially where we're at today. So, and I'll be happy to work with President Dillon and Councilor DeMers to come up with, let's revamp this, let's put a new price tag on this thing. Let's make it more realistic. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, outside of this application, I agree with everybody said, I think this is true and everything. From our, my perspective, and I'm sure, you know, I'm not going to throw Attorney Targaryen, but I got a call just today for almost an identical project that they want to bring forward in a similar area that is, off the record, I'm not going to say that you addressed, but it is a blighted area. What I think at an macro level, what's happening is, is that, and I agree, I agree with everything that was said in this table, but, and I agree with Councilor DeMers, that, you know, these sites may not be developed where we have opportunities for people to better the areas. We don't help them in some way, and again, I'm not saying this is the answer, but if we don't incentivize them in some way or are lax in certain things, these are going to stay blighted areas. And that, and again, specifically with this application, that may just be the case. Again, I can think of two off the top of my head that I've, from our perspective, this is going to be an ongoing discussion, that I feel that, and again, it's just sort of a citizen almost, that if the city doesn't address it, some sort of ordinance change, downtown is not going to be redeveloped at all. The other thing to look at too is, and I agree, I think outside of the box is good, I think it's healthy. At some point, at least, the developers that we're representing, they, they're capped, meaning they're willing to put money into these projects, but at some point, it's just too burdensome to put millions of dollars into a project, but the cap rate is not going to, it's not going to even out in 25 years. So at that point, they're going to, they're going to keep these buildings because their cap rates are good, but they really want to make things better. So I think that there's that dichotomy that we all have to work together and figure it out, you know, from both sides. That's just sort of a general statement, and I'm sort of passionate to downtown, because I go there, I eat, I stuff my face every day down there.
And little by little, the center has redeveloped, and I heard statements exactly like that 18 years ago. If you guys don't do something, nobody's going to redevelop. Maybe you guys just aren't the ones that should be doing this, but at the end of the day, building a place for people to live, but they don't have a place to park, is just not reasonable. It's not reasonable, and if they actually had to pay for that parking, that is definitely going to cut into their profit margin, no doubt about it. To me, I look at it, this is a sweet thing for developers, they're getting off the hook. Absolutely. Oh, we don't have to really provide parking, we're going to write a second $4,500. That's just not enough anymore, Attorney. It's just not enough. Woburn has to do better for our businesses downtown, and we have to do better for the people who are going to be living in those apartments or condos or whatever they're going to be. So I appreciate the efforts that you're putting into it. Oh, no, I appreciate your efforts, and I hope when you come back, and are you back in front of us in July?
We're trying to be, yeah, we're trying. We're on the...
The 16th?
We're trying to be. I may have to request a continues, can't figure out the parking. So we're trying, but.
Okay. And if, well, on the 16th, will you have more information about the water and those things, or?
Yeah, my idea is to have at least a better idea of the parking look we can squeeze in and have further discussions on that.
Okay.
I think the drainage would work, but again, it's just more indicative on the parking space.
Okay. All right, well, if no one else has any other questions, thank you very much, Attorney.
Of course, thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you as well.
Next on the agenda is Bombay Baking LLC for a modification to a special permit originally issued back in 2004, Starbucks. Attorney Targaryen, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Hello, welcome. With me this evening is my client, Babu Reday, and Scott Thornton with Traffic Engineer. So this special permit is seeking to replace Starbucks with Bombay Baking LLC. So the request is to modify the 2004 special permit to allow Bombay Baking LLC as the petitioner, and then to allow for hours of operation from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. The plan is to operate the Starbucks, former Starbucks, basically, you know, like it was, to add some Indian coffees and obviously the drive-through. I think at the public hearing, the one thing requested was traffic, traffic generation. Scott has completed that, will present that now. So I have...
Just for the record, sir, if you could tell board in your name, I know he knows it, but...
Sure. Scott Thornton with Menesma Associates.
Motion to accept these, make the pod on the front row.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Senator. So what's being asked around in...
Oh, sorry.
It's a matter that summarizes accounts that we conducted at similar facilities that was to come. Typically, for a comparison of traffic generation, we would look at the ITD Generation Manual, but that would show something like 134 transactions an hour. We know from the review that we did with Starbucks that that's not true, because Starbucks was generating less than half that number. So we have that Starbucks transaction. We then went out, did a review, we looked 27 towns all around Woburn to find similar international-style coffee shops. We had to go further out, we wound up looking, yeah, 27 towns, 21 coffee shops, and the ones that we felt were most similar to what's proposed, one in Stoneham and one in Lowell. And so we were able to get out there with some counts last Wednesday and Thursday, broke down the data, got this letter put together. What it showed is that those types of coffee shops generate about two-thirds of the traffic, that the Starbucks, two-thirds the transaction, sorry, a third of the transactions, that a Starbucks site would generate, what it comes to lots of. And based on that, we think that this site is comparable to that data with other coffee shops, and production, it's likely to happen, transactions, it should be a comparable decrease of traffic activity, it's a probable decrease in parking needs for customers looking for parking spaces. So we think there's going to be less of a traffic demand at coffee shops with the Indian coffee shop. I did send this to City Engineer Ori on Friday. I had a brief discussion with him today. He was going to try to get comments to the council today, but obviously, he's got a lot of his own. Do you have an answer?
And I thank you for sending this out earlier. I did have an opportunity to go over it. I'm not sure if the rest of the council did. They probably are just now looking at it, but is there anybody that has any questions for the petitioner at this point? Councilor?
So for the record, I have no opposition to this restaurant or this coffee shop going there, but for the record, I truly dislike these traffic studies. I've said it before, I hate that it doesn't take any local data, and, you know, this one, for instance, and again, nothing against what you do by any means, but, you know, when we're comparing data of coffee shops in Stoneham and Lowell, we're in Woburn on Washington Street, you know, looking at similar restaurants, whether it's a coffee shop or a fast food restaurant, and comparing what they bring in compared to what this restaurant brings in. Again, in different cities and towns, different streets, I just don't like it. And I don't think in my short time on the council, and even before I was on the council when I was starting to pay attention, I've never seen a traffic study that has said it's going to increase traffic, not once.
They never do.
Okay. And I've seen some of the buildings that we've actually built that have clearly increased traffic. So again, I have no opposition to your restaurant. I wish you the best of luck, but I truly dislike traffic studies. That's it, that's my thing.
I concur all of that. It's interesting, because we do get these numbers, and it's almost like people are saying, oh, don't worry, our business is never going to grow, right? But I thank you for, yes, we do, we always hope that, but...
If I could, if I could just... So the petitioner put together some projections of what they expect for transactions in various times of the year. Those are a little bit higher, but they're still not tied. I totally get what you're saying.
Absolutely, and I think it's a good comparison. Again, I'm the one that brought up the whole, when Starbucks left that location, go there, I brought in the local comparison. So bringing in this coffee shop compared to Starbucks, it's about as close as you're going to get, so even if it generated the same as Starbucks did, does it really matter? No, I just, again, I was talking about the traffic study is kind of a little jiffy, that's all, that's it. But I appreciate what you do, and you've been in front of us multiple times, so your business is, you know, people need you, so.
Councilor DeMiro, then President Dillon.
It's been my personal traffic study when I go to the Dunkin' Donuts. It seems like, no offense, but that's where I base my numbers on. It seems like it's always like Thursday and Friday, there's a huge pulse. I don't know, it's because people get paid, but it's like, it's always, there's always I don't know if it's 'cause people get paid, but it's like, it's always, there's always this huge line, whereas I'm there almost every day at the same time, and I'm going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I don't see this, Thursday, Friday. And people can laugh all they want, it's like you see it, you're like, this is kinda funny. And to my, to my colleague's point, traffic studies are, they are unique in some fashion in. It's, it's, yeah.
It's soft science.
Soft science. Uh, but I do agree with, and I, and I wish you the best on this, that your, your volume is as much as Starbucks, but as we all know, Starbucks is, their volume's pretty, pretty impressive, national, globally. So for that, I, I am in favor of this restaurant, um, but I have to agree with, they're very much skewed, and I don't agree with it. But I, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
President Dillon.
So my questions for Attorney Tarby, just for my information and the knowledge of the public out there, as this proceeds, do they, the petitioner go in front of the licensing commission after us or before us, or how's that work out?
No requirement to go before, well, he did, he did vote before, and I, and I have some conditions, it's too bad.
We talked about it.
The council, we're, we're, I mean, yeah, I don't know where, okay, to address, I think, the licensing commission.
Very good. Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Anybody else? So.
I have, I have a list of.
Can we, can I have a motion to accept the draft order of conditions?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Only one page? No, I'm just kidding.
Got both for us.
Okay, so the, uh, the first condition is, um, called condition one, that references the plan of record. Second condition indicates that unless modified by the decision, all conditions in the original special permit of January 8th, 2004, in effect, special permits granted to Bombay Baking LLC, non-transferable, except for the Ubin Council, hours of operation Monday through Sunday, 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, signage plan to comply with all logistic city ordinances, petitioner be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of its property on a daily basis to prevent the accumulation of trash from the debris, and then seven, those rights with this proposal.
So Attorney Tarby, earlier today when we were talking, um, I mentioned to you I was gonna put a condition that there'd be no outside seating, um, and I'm gonna include that tonight, or we can send these conditions back for action, whatever the council wants to do, but based on my earlier conversations with Tom Quinn, um, it's his position that this is a new permit and, um, outside seating is not allowed. And, and I'm open to have that conversation, but if the, if the building inspector is not going to approve it, I would never include it in the condition. So you'll have to have that conversation and debate with him.
Yeah, we're gonna have that discussion with him because we've asked the council for a special permit to modify the 2004 permit for Starbucks, which had outside seating and inside seating, so we're looking to continue that, but I will have that discussion with Tom, and if he still takes the position that there's no outside seating, issue that's been used in the past, um, on fast food restaurants, and I think it will sound to the effect that no outside seating until, you know, plans are full, uh, with this is adopted, I, I.
Okay.
I'll forward, I'll forward to you, but I, I am gonna talk to Tom, I just wanted him to know for the record that we're looking to modify the permit that already had outside seating.
Okay. Um, so there's a couple of things that are still outstanding, right? There's that conversation that you're gonna have with Inspector Quinn, um, and then we still need to hear from, I don't think we're gonna hear anything different from Engineer Corey, um, but he does, apparently he is gonna send us a memo. Um, so I would like to suggest that we send this, um, back for action, uh, for our July 16th meeting, um, and I assure the council, it will be ready to go for another draft list of conditions for everyone to see, um, when we meet again in July, and hopefully get this off the hook.
I would just like to ask you.
Counselor DeMambrano, yeah.
Madam Chair, do you have any ideas about any type of allocation of parking spots for Grappa, per se? Do you find that necessary at all, that you may think?
I don't think there were any, um, for the previous, um, coffee shop, um, Counselor DeMambrano.
I would just caution, that's a very slippery slope. We've had this discussion.
Yeah, I, I don't, I didn't support them at the Ubin Village.
Yeah, we, we had this discussion, because it's one of those things where I get it, I really do. There are, you know, um, closer to the city, like suburb of Cambridge, Boston, they may have some dedicated parking spots for ride, ride share pickup for food, uh, but I think it opens Pandora's box because we would have to go backwards and forwards on every permit moving forward because we can't just pick one site to make that requirement, they would have to, they would have to be uniform. Mr. Grohl, thank you.
Any other comments? I did have one final comment on the VIC license. Um, I did tell Chairman Skeffington that we would include that as a condition that the, um, petitioner will, upon issuance of the special permit, uh, finish all of his responsibilities to get that VIC license before he can open up his shop.
Yep, your word.
All right. Um, so I'll make sure that's part of our document, uh, when we go back in July. If nobody else has anything else.
I'll make a motion to send this back for action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Do I have a first?
I'll make that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Chuck.